We'll be moving right along with our joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and Glendale Housing Authority for June 15th, beginning at 2:00, calling the meeting to order at 2:14. A roll call for City Council, please.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Present.
Brotman.
Here.
Kusakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
And Mayor Devine.
Here. For the authority.
And we have a roll call for the authority. Authority member Aginian.
Here.
Agajanian.
Present.
Brotman.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Karazian.
Here.
And Cherokee Saki.
Here.
Thank you, and what's next, please?
The agenda for the Tuesday, June 15, 2021, Joint Public Meeting of the City Council and Housing Authority was posted on June 8, 2021, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you, and next?
Next would be Community Development regarding consideration of establishment of a landlord-tenant advisory board, A, City Council motion to note and file this report, B, City Council motion to direct staff, C, Housing Authority motion to note and file this report.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of City Council, Chair Kusakian, members of the Housing Authority. This item is presented to you in response to Housing Chair Kusakian relating to the issues that arise typically between landlords and tenants for a, some form of an advisory body, and staff has prepared a menu of options for council's consideration. And with that, I'll turn it over to Peter Zowak, our Assistant Director of Community Development, for the presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor Devine, Chair Kusakian, members of the Council and Housing Authority. As the City Manager has stated, the City Council and Housing Authority requested a report regarding the consideration of establishment of a landlord-tenant advisory body to address landlord-tenant and rental housing issues within the city, and such a body, if established, would be placed within the Community Development Department. Staff has prepared a report, and staff is recommending that the City Council and Housing Authority receive and file this report and provide direction as deemed appropriate. The report itself is broken up into three components. We first provide a review of agencies with various advisory bodies related to landlord-tenant issues. We also talk about City of Glendale's past experience in this area, and then some possible considerations for the City Council and Housing Authority moving forward. Our research has shown that the tenant landlord committee is not necessarily a very common committee that exists within the state of California. Certainly, it's not as common as a planning commission type of committee or Parked and Recs Civil Service Commission. There are a small number of agencies that do have such a committee or commission dedicated towards landlord-tenant issues. We found that a number of them have these bodies established because a number of them have rent control, local rent control mandates, and those mandates dictate that a tenant-landlord commission and/or committee be established to run and administer that local rent control program. So on the slide, you'll see just a sampling of some of the agencies out there that do have rent control, and there are more than just these examples here, a little over 20. And they are the cities of Berkeley, San Francisco, Santa Monica, Mountain View, West Hollywood, Palm Springs, Richmond, East Palo Alto, and Los Angeles as examples. And then, as I said, they strictly run and administer those local respective agencies' local rent control mandates and ordinances. What we did find is that there are a small number of cities that are independent of a local rent control mandate, they do not have them, yet they do have some form of a tenant-landlord advisory body. Those are the cities of Culver City, Burbank, and Campbell. In the example of Culver City, they have what is called a landlord-tenant mediation board. The board oversees the non-binding rent mediation process that they have in place. If a tenant is notified of a rent increase the tenant feels is excessive, he or she may file a request for mediation. The landlord must attend a mediation session in good faith before the rent increase can take effect. The mediation does not require an agreement to be reached, only that the issues be discussed. So landlord is required to attend a meeting, they're not required to abide by any of the mediation decisions that are made. And what's interesting is that Culver City, at the time that we were doing this research, Culver City was in the process of adopting a local rent control mandate, and in their particular situation, rather than establish a committee or commission to operate that rent control ordinance and monitor it, they have a hearing officer that is in place to make decisions with regards to their local rent control ordinance. So it is unknown as to how much longer Culver City may need a landlord-tenant mediation board, since rent increases will be mandated by the local ordinance. As of the time of the presentation of this report, they're continuing with it, and they're going to be making some determination in the future as to whether or not they'll keep it, or modify it, or possibly eliminate it because of their local rent control ordinance. Second example of a city that has such a commission is the city of Burbank, and they have a landlord-tenant commission. The stated goals of the landlord-tenant commission for Burbank are to recommend to the council rules and regulations regarding rents, to mediate rent adjustment disputes, to become familiar with landlord-tenant developments in other communities, provide tenant referrals to appropriate public and private agencies. They meet on the first Monday of the month. They initially started as a committee back in 1979, and then was changed to an official commission in 1985. And the change to a commission at the time was indicated to be because of the desire to address a wide variety of issues, including landlord-tenant conflicts involving property maintenance, repairs, lease disagreements, evictions, rent increases, and to provide some mediation between landlords and tenants. The Burbank Commission meets on the first Monday of every month, it's open to the public, they meet under the Brown Act. It is a five-person commission made up of various stakeholders in the community. Staff was able to review meeting minutes of a couple of meetings that the commission did have. We provided them to you as an exhibit. In staff's analysis of at least those two meetings, and some of the others that we viewed but didn't necessarily provide, a lot of the activities noted in the two meetings tend to be question-and-answer type activities between tenants and/or landlords that attended the meeting and asked these questions, and then were provided answers by the commission and/or city staff at that time. Staff found some of their duties to be very similar to some of the duties already being performed by city staff here in Glendale, and that'd be staff that operate the rental rights program. And then the third city with a committee was the city of Campbell, and their committee is called a Rental Increase Fact-Finding Committee. They hear complaints brought by tenants or owners involved in rental increase disputes, and they issue non-binding determinations. They're composed of two tenant representatives, two landlord reps, and one neutral representative as chairperson, and the meetings are simply held as needed. Just to give you some background then, on the city of Glendale's past experience with regards to this area of tenant landlord issues and committees and commissions, the city does have some experience, and that ten, started to take place in the year 2000. And it was around that time that the city started to experience, or at least hear from tenants and landlords, tenants, about rent increases taking place, about issues with regards to evictions that tenants felt were unfair. So the council at that time established a Just Cause Working Committee. The Just Cause Working Committee was followed by a Rental Housing Issues Working Committee. City did establish a 1212 rent disclosure program. Then, most recently, the city of Glendale looked at the issue of rent control, had discussions on that, and then rather than implement rent control, the rental rights program was implemented. And then there's been recent housing programming activity geared towards rental housing households as well. As I said, the Just Cause Working Committee was formed not long after the council in 2002 adopted a Just Cause Eviction Ordinance to deal with issues that they were hearing back at that time, prior to 2002, from tenants about being served eviction notices for reasons that were, they felt were unfair. The council at that time adopted an ordinance calling for this Just Cause Eviction process, and then subsequently decided to amend the ordinance based upon comments that they have received from the public after adoption of the ordinance. They decided to put together a Just Cause Working Committee to look at the ordinance that was adopted and then recommend changes. And that committee was made up of rental housing stakeholders, and then the committee did meet, they did look over the Just Cause Eviction Ordinance, they did come back and made changes, proposed those to council back in January 21, 2003. Those changes were adopted. Based upon the work of the Just Cause Working Committee, about a month or two after the committee's recommendations were made and the Just Cause Eviction Ordinance was amended, the council then decided at that time to establish what they call the Rental Housing Issues Working Committee. And that was established in 2003, and was comprised of experts in the housing field to discuss and formulate other potential policy recommendations above and beyond the eviction ordinance. The meetings of the committee were open to the public, and they followed the Brown Act procedures, and the committee met for an estimated 99 hours over the course of 16 meetings. Their goal was to have discussions done, conducted by a core group of experts in the field that represent rental housing, property owners, tenants, and other concerned residents in order to broaden resident participation in the discussion and to further educate the public about facts surrounding these important issues. They did come back with recommendations. The recommendations included making further amendments to the Just Cause Eviction Ordinance that was in place. There are recommendations about establishing a rental housing inspection program. There was a recommendation of establishing an inclusionary zoning ordinance, placing more priority and resources in affordable housing development, placing priority on family housing, and asking the council to study the possible establishment of a local housing corporation that would be used as a nonprofit to locally develop affordable housing projects. The Rental Housing Issue Committee was made up of 15 members. They then split into four subcommittees, and those four subcommittees were affordability, habitability, outreach, and again, Just Cause Eviction. And then concurrently with that discussion and process, a new association was formed in response to some of the work that the council was going through, and it was called the Glendale Apartment Owners Association, and they proposed a voluntary rent mediation program, and that was, brought some interest by the city council, so much so that a program concept was developed. It was partially funded by the city, using $15,000 for education outreach funded by CDBG at that time. Unfortunately, not too long after establishing, the 1212 rent disclosure program closed. It really did not take off at all, and the program was shut down because of lack of participation by landlords. Terms of recent activity that the city council and a good number of the council members and Housing Authority members currently present have taken, again, they've developed the rental rights program that was developed in 2019. Recently, there was an adoption of inclusionary zoning ordinance. There was an emphasis placed on creating new state legislation to advance affordable housing development and causes. If you recall, the city of Glendale sponsored three state bills, of which one of them did make it through the process and was signed into law. Another was vetoed by the governor at the last 12th hour, at the last moment, and the third one unfortunately died in committee. Some other activity, recent activity, was there was the approval of a commercial development impact fee, in which the fee would be reserved for affordable housing. There was establishment of the monthly housing subsidy program that is ongoing right now, slightly, a little over a year into operation. There was the establishment of the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, ERAP, during the height of the COVID pandemic, using additional funding that was provided by the federal government. There was approval of a low-income family emergency rental assistance program that's being administered by a Verdugo Job Center, LIFE RAP. And finally, approval of a low-income student rental assistance program that's being administered by GCC. So a lot of activity as of late by the city council and the housing authority in the area of affordable housing, particularly for rental development. We did seek some preliminary stakeholder input on this concept. There was not much to provide them other than, really, the statement that's at the very top of the staff report, you know, "What are your thoughts and interests in a landlord-tenant commission or committee advisory body that would be responsible for dealing with tenant- landlord issues within the city?" So we solicited input from the Apartment Owners Association of Greater Los Angeles, the YWCA, the Glendale Association of Realtors, Glendale Tenants Union, and the California Apartment Owners Association of Los Angeles. We heard back from the Apartment Owners Association of Greater Los Angeles, they submitted a letter in opposition to the establishment of a landlord-tenant commission among some of the, and these are all attached to your staff reports as exhibits as well, so we're just providing some very quick highlights. AGLA was concerned about the uncertainty of the pandemic and adding additional regulations to landlords and tenants during this time. They thought that the city has already taken a proactive approach in providing new rental housing programming, and they cited the state's new rent control law that came into effect as well as another legal tool that's been passed down that benefits tenants. The YWCA, comments provided by the YWCA were provided by the executive director, and I should say, clarify that they were provided in her capacity as a member of the Coalition for Anti-Racist Glendale. They expressed support for the establishment of a tenant landlord commission. They stated that it was a concrete next step for the city to take following its unanimous passage of the Sundown Town Resolution. Some of their recommendations included that this commission be able to review and mediate cases, they should meet at least once a month, they suggested any type of body be composed of 13 members, and that the commissioner should be offered a small stipend. We also reached out to the Glendale Association of Realtors, and they also cited many of the state's recent activities as being comprehensive actions that have been taken both by the state and the city already to address rental issues, including the rental rights program. Although stating that they are skeptical of a landlord-tenant commission, they do say that if a potential commission addresses disputes regarding issues other than allowable rent increases, for example, habitability or maintenance issues, or conducts educational outreach, then consideration could be given to the formation of a landlord-tenant commission. The Foothill Apartment Owners Association did not see the necessity of a commission in Glendale. They felt that the policies right now under the rental rights program are sufficient to address tenant landlord relationship. Their office has seen a decrease in landlord-tenant issues coming out of Glendale since adoption of the rental rights program. And then finally, the Glendale Tenants Union was solicited as well for some input. As an organization, they did not provide a position on this issue, they chose to wait until a more formal proposal. So it goes back to when I had said earlier, it was a very broad question because we were still waiting for direction from the council and the housing authority as to what it is there's interest is in. So they had said that as a formal organizational endorsement or opposition, they are choosing to wait until a more formal proposal is available or for evaluation at a later time. However, they did provide, and some members did provide comments, and some of those comments included that they would like to see a commission that would provide a regular forum for tenants to discuss issues from a renter's perspective. They asked that the commission hear disputes, mediate, and arbitrate cases, suggest policy changes, and provide feedback to the city council and staff. That such a commission should be made up of members large enough to reflect the various income brackets, race, gender, geography, and age of tenant populations. They go on to suggest that a commission and/or committee or advisory body should consist of 11 to 15 members whose makeup should be reflective of the ratio of the renter-to-non-renter population of Glendale, 67% renter to 33% non-renter. That the commission should have binding authority rather than advisory. Community organizations should have a say in who should be appointed to the commission. They did not feel that private attorneys should be placed on commissions. Commission meetings should be held in evenings to better allow for members and audiences to attend. And they also suggested that members be paid a stipend to cover costs such as childcare or time off work in order to attend meetings. And then finally, the California Apartment Owners Association of Los Angeles stated that they would be interested in hearing more about a landlord-tenant commission as it gets further refined, and referenced the city of Burbank model, is one that seems to be working well in their opinion. In this situation though, but keep in mind that the city of Burbank does not have any type of local rent ordinance in any way similar to the rental rights program in Glendale. Finally, there are options for the city council and housing authority to consider moving forward. And they are, those three options are to establish some type of landlord-tenant commission, committee, or other public body. The city council and housing authority could establish a temporary working committee, and then finally, the city council and housing authority could take no action on the commission in establishing, in discussing the first option, establishing a landlord-tenant commission, committee, or other public body. In terms of a committee, it can consist of a mix of landlord-tenant volunteers, members, or landlord-tenant advocacy groups and homeowners. They can meet monthly or quarterly, and they can be responsible for developing recommendations to present it to the city council on identified policy and programming. A commission could also be formed, it can consist of a mix of landlords, tenants, homeowners, and again, members of advocacy groups. They can meet on an ongoing basis, they could be asked to bring back ideas of new legislation, educate the public, provide guidance to landlords and tenants, provide some type of voluntary dispute resolution for landlords and tenants, and address other housing issues as it relates to residential rental housing. And in the research that staff looked at, we did find somewhat of a distinction because it kind of gets thrown in committee, commission, you know, which is it? And so we thought it'd be important not just to highlight what we thought was the distinction between a committee and/or commission. A committee operates as a means of a sounding board for policymakers. They serve as a conduit for citizen input, gathering, and analyzing, and recommending options to policymakers, and they can meet at council's discretion, they could be disbanded at council discretion, or within some timeframe. A commission is more formal, they typically serve as an independent body with process and decision and policymaking authority, you know, and they must follow Brown Act noticing and public comment procedures. If there is a desire to pursue a commission, a committee, or some type of ad hoc committee, some of the points of consideration would be what would the purpose and role of the body be to the city council? Does the city council have a specific issue or issues they would want to address through such a committee or commission? What the desired makeup of the body would be, numbers of commissioners representing which groups? How would the role of a commission or committee differ from that of tasks currently being performed by staff or of the housing authority? And what level of binding authority would you like to give to the body, and what level could they be given from a legal perspective? Going back to that option of establishing a temporary working committee, again, it can consist of a mix of landlord-tenant volunteers, members of advocacy groups and homeowners, and they can meet on a quarterly, monthly, or as needed or ongoing basis, and they can be used to bring back ideas on new legislation, address specific issues assigned by council, they can be looked to study the rental rights program and see if any recommendations for changes could be made on that. And then finally, the third action is to take no action on such a commission. There may be the feeling that many of the duties and responsibilities of a committee or commission are currently being performed by staff, particularly by rental rights staff in the operation of that program, and that the responsibilities would somewhat overlap with the duties traditionally being performed by the housing authority. And just, since we've mentioned it, I've mentioned it a couple of times, the rental rights program is not just, and staff, it's not just implementing the rental rights program itself, there are other elements that impact Glendale landlords and tenants' laws and legislation that also impact the rental rights program. So when staff is dealing with members of the public to explain the rental rights program, they're also interacting and advising them on things such as the state rent control program that was passed, AB 1482. Lately, they've been providing, in the last, certainly in the last 14 months, providing information to landlords and tenants about COVID-19 orders. We had the rent freeze, we had the eviction prohibition, many different orders coming down, almost monthly that staff was then advising the public. Staff does answer health and safety questions related to apartment conditions. There's also AB 1110, that, a law that is in effect that comes into play on occasion when dealing with tenants. And then the state, the new state rent relief program that's been up in place and advertised for the last four months to provide rent relief to both tenants and landlords, and staff is providing information on that as well. So that is our report, and available for questions. I do have two staff members as well from the rental rights program that if I can't answer questions, will refer to them as well, if there are any.
Thank you, Mr. Zowak, very much. We have callers. Are there any questions from my colleagues first, before we take the callers? Or do you want to wait?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay, Mr. Aginian?
On Slide 2022, I believe, you mentioned about establishment of temporary working committee. Now, would that be an ad hoc committee, since ad hoc committees are specific working committees anyway?
Correct, it could take the place of an ad hoc committee if that's where the council directs.
Okay, I just want to clarify that, that's all.
Any others?
Mayor Devine?
Yes, is that Mr. Brotman?
Yeah.
Yes.
I was wondering if, Peter, you could just talk about the rental rights program a little bit, because we talked about it offline, and I think it would be useful for people to hear just a little bit about, you know, the staffing, the kind of workload, any specific challenges around workload, you know, what kind of issues you're addressing.
Sure, I do have a couple of backup slides in case this question came up with regards to rental rights program. If we can go back to the PowerPoint, please. Let's see if they show up. Okay. And you can see this?
Yes.
Okay. So the rental rights program, it was ordinance 5922. There are three components to that rental rights program. It's the Just Cause Eviction, it applies to three or more units, Right to Lease component, and that's the mandatory offer of a one-year lease, and that applies to five or more units. And then there's a relocation component, and the formula for that depends upon the number of units in the building and construction. But typically, any rent increase above 7% could trigger a relocation payment to a tenant at their discretion. And again, rental rights staff, so you can see, there are different components, and each component has a different trigger point for that prohibition or option to, before it kicks in play. So there's a lot of nuances to the rental rights program that staff has to go through when answering questions by either landlords or tenants. And then again, as I said earlier, they also answer questions related to AB 1482, COVID-19, and any other housing-related question. We provided a quick breakdown, again, it was established in March of 2019, so for 2019, 2020 fiscal year, staff received 1,300 calls, 500 emails, and approximately 1,000 walk-in customers asking about issues about the rental rights program. For fiscal year 2021, we received 2,000 calls, approximately 900 emails, and we had zero walk-ins, not because we weren't assisting people walking in, the city hall was closed during the COVID pandemic. Prior to COVID, the rental rights program had a scheduled process in which community meetings were being held, particularly immediately after adoption of the rental rights program. We began holding community meetings for education and outreach purposes, and as you can see, we had meetings beginning in April, a couple weeks after adoption of the ordinance, all the way through October. We were taking a break for the holidays, and they were going to come back in January, and that's when COVID hit, and all outreach efforts to the community in person were suspended. And we were going places to community centers throughout Glendale, we were at elementary schools, we were at the central library, the community meetings were being conducted in English, Armenian, and Spanish as well. We made presentations at the Glendale Chamber of Commerce, Association of Realtors, we consulted with the Housing Rights Center, that's another, that's an outside agency that also provides some tenant landlord counseling, but they also are contracted, and it's a HUD mandate. They are contracted to provide assistance in housing discrimination cases that tenants may feel they are subject to. And so they're the investigative body that go out and look at that. We were present at events, public events, the Caesar Chavez Celebration, the Fall Festival, Spring Extravaganza. We did conduct major mailings as well during this period of time. We, to date, have had four large-scale mailers to Glendale residents and landlords. Approximately each mailer, we've been operating with the United States Post Office through a program that they have called Every Door Direct. And so under that program, we're able to target every residential unit that the post office delivers to, and then target mailing to those residential units, so we can avoid commercial units and things like that. It's about 47,000 Glendale renters, over 5,000 landlords outside of Glendale that get targeted, that have been targeted with our four large-scale mailers. And those mailers in the beginning were rental rights program information, and lately was rental rights program information, but more so COVID-19 regulations as well. We've had multiple appearances on television, and then we created an educational video that's on the city's website that's done in three languages as well, and takes someone through the rental rights program. And the staff itself is made up of four staff members. There are some staff members in a supervisory role, so a very small percentage of their salary is dedicated to that. There are two staff members that work on the rental rights program and interact with members of the community nearly on a full-time basis. One is an hourly employee, and the other is a full-time salaried employee.
I think we're on the next slide.
The next slide, the next slide is just some information about the Housing Rights Center, if the question was asked, and I kind of explained the differentiation between what they do and what staff does. As I said, the Housing Rights Center provides some tenant landlord counseling. They are paid for out of CDBG funds and Section 8 funds, because it is mandated by HUD. They have a goal this year of trying to assist 500 households as of July. They, well, currently, there are, in this current program year, there are 246 residents that they've been assisting, and they are looking at assisting 33 households who have presented possible discrimination inquiries to them. And that would be it.
Mayor Devine, I could just follow up with one quick question. So, Peter, could you just also address the issue of, you know, whether the team is overloaded or has capacity? You know, are, what are your turnaround times? Are you able to respond to the calls and walk-ins, you know, quickly? Are cases, is anything being dropped? Just a sense of whether help is needed, or you feel like you've got the right resources to handle the caseload?
I would say that, to date, the staff is able to handle the caseload. I would say that when the rental rights program was first adopted, the challenge of getting the information out to the community was daunting at the time, but staff was able to mobilize, and they had this plan in place before COVID hit, and they had to adjust. I'm proud to say that a call into the rental rights program to ask a question gets returned, certainly within 24 hours, I would say most often within that day, and very good chance that the staff member would answer the que, answer the phone live and begin talking to them immediately instead of leaving a message. Emails get responded very quickly. We've had some very good feedback from the community about how the rental rights staff has been operating the program. And we, and then rental rights staff has also had some successes in what they do. And I should say, it's not easy to administer. There's, you have to keep in mind when you're dealing with a tenant landlord issue, there's always two sides to a story. And so there might be someone calling in with a complaint, but there's always another side to it. And so staff can provide some advisement immediately, but a lot of times, a phone call results in, give me this information, let me check something, and then I will get back to you. And so typically, things aren't conducted and completed in one phone call. It'll take multiple calls, it'll take research that's off, done offline, and then getting back to possibly another party involved, a landlord, or if it's a landlord calling about a tenant, reaching out to the other party, getting information, and then coming back and getting an answer for everyone and addressing things. Some of the questions can be answered in one simple call. A lot of them tend to be complicated, and they tend to require a lot of questioning by staff, because there are a whole host of elements to each component that could change the direction of what an answer is. And so staff needs to be diligent. There is, in problem, very problematic cases, there is consultation with the city attorney's office, who helped draft the rental rights program, and certainly understands it as well. But there's always unusual cases that require with staff to meet with city attorney staff to think about and discuss before getting back with answers. So staff is very proud of the program.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. I, I think there's going to be a challenge moving forward as we come out of the pandemic.
Brazian, do you have a question?
Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a quick question for Peter.
Go ahead.
Peter, is the rent increase still 7% or it got up lately?
For the rental rights program, the trigger point for relocation is 7%.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Sir, correction?
The, and maybe the other question, or the question might have been also in reference to the state rent control, which is, dictates what are permissible rent increases as well. And I just checked with staff, and that is 8.6, and that was newly issued in April. So the state rent control program is 5% plus local CPI, whatever that might be, in April. And so the new limit was issued, and it's 8.6 for that program. So that's, and that demonstrates that the problem, or the difficulties in administering and answering questions. Well, you know, what's the cap? Well, which program are we talking about here? And so it's involved.
Complicated. Any other, any questions from my colleagues? Otherwise, we'll go to the phones.
I have questions, but I can ask them now, or we can hear from the callers.
Well, you can ask them now. Go ahead, and let's, then we'll hear the callers.
So, thank you for this report. I found it to be informative, and I like how the, I appreciate how the information was organized. So in terms of Burbank, you mentioned that they will do policy and regulation recommendations as part of their scope, but do we know how many policies have been recommended from that body that have been adopted by the city?
Correct. And that information was taken from the City of Burbank's webpage with regards to the commission's role and responsibilities. When we did ask staff that question, they couldn't recall in the near past timeframe of any policy recommendations that have been made to the council.
It'll be interesting to know if there's been any, and what the significance of them has been. For the Culver City Landlord-Tenant Mediation Board, how many cases per year do they hear on average?
Not many. Before, prior to the adoption of their local rent control ordinance, not many cases. They did, in the earlier years of formation, in the latter years, they kind of indicated that it tended, tended to be the same people coming back to them through the program that were receiving rent increases regardless of the amount. You know, the examples were given, 1%, and yet someone was contesting a 1% increase.
Is it five cases per year? Is it 12? Is it one a month?
My recollection was that, I don't think it was more than 15 cases a year.
Okay. I'm just organizing some of my thoughts. Adamir, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right, let's go ahead to the phone calls. How many do we have right now?
Mayor, we have five phone calls.
Okay, let's hear them, please.
Nathan Miller, Nathan, you have three minutes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Nathan Miller with the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles. Today, the city council and housing authority will consider the establishment of a landlord-tenant advisory body. The City of Glendale has a rental rights program. This is a well-established program adopted in 2019 and utilized by both renters and rental housing providers alike. As stated in the staff report, in assessing various programs, the most impactful and far-reaching has been and continues to be the rental rights program, such that during the pandemic, the rental rights program was the primary go-to for tenants or landlord in Glendale for questions regarding new laws and emergency orders. Moreover, and in light of the success of the rental rights program, the city has not identified any need or objective that would necessitate the establishment of a new advisory body. The nature of a landlord-tenant commission would essentially provide equivalent services and would include the additional allocation of significant city resources. We recommend that the city council and housing authority simply adopt a motion to note and file the report. The association welcomes the opportunity to continue to engage in meaningful dialogue with the city on housing-related matters. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Next.
Matthew Buck? You have three minutes, Matthew. Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. Matt Buck, California Apartment Association. Yeah, just, we're very interested to hear what the council's thoughts and the authorities' thoughts are on the landlord-tenant body idea that you're looking at. If staff is directed to move forward with this, though, we ask that for one, that one, the landlord-tenant body would have, would just be an advisory body. It would not have policymaking abilities. And two, that the city council would be the one to select the individuals for said body or commission, if that's the case. So, an advisory capacity only, and council decides who's on the, on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buck. Next.
Karen Kwak. Karen?
Hi, this is Karen Kwak.
You have three minutes. Go ahead.
In the last five months, I've been finding out how difficult it can be to get able to read a two-page proposal. After all, the idea of a tenant landlord commission or board is not new. They exist in many cities and counties. My outline is simple. A tenant landlord commission would need to be large enough to encompass that diversity in this city, at least 11 to 13 members with equal numbers of tenants and landlords, plus a few tie-breaking community members. The function of this commission would be to mediate or arbitrate disputes between tenants and landlords, such as harassment cases, which are very much on the rise, before they become huge problems, because our goal is to keep people housed. This commission could also collect data about tenant landlord issues and comment on city housing policy. This city habitually holds discussions with developers, and landlords are well-represented on the city council, but it seldom occurs to anyone to ask tenants for our views, although we are 67% of the city. Creating a tenant landlord commission would provide the city with a ready supply of tenant commissioners who can be consulted on various housing issues. The new part of my proposal concerns the process for selecting commissioners. In order to select commissioners who will reflect and respond to community concerns, community groups should participate in this process in an open, fair, and transparent way. Giving community groups a voice in the process would produce commissioners who are accountable to the public and not just the one council member who appointed them. I trust that you all remember Wyngate, or as I call it, rich white people problem. The City of Pasadena recently set up a new police oversight commission, which has three seats appointed by community groups. This is where I got the idea of including community groups from. And yes, I mean, community groups like the Glendale Tenants Union and the Coalition for Anti-Racist Glendale, who have advocated for this commission. What about timing? Ideally, this commission should be set up and ready to go before the state division protections expire, because we all, all want to stay ahead of the curve. This city approved a new sustainability commission on September 1, 2020, and this new commission has its first meeting in April 2021. That's seven months. Yes, creating a new process that democratically involves community groups will take some time to execute fairly, but let's see if we can master that timing and see if this new commission in seven months or even less. It's such a surprise to see the staff report that landlords and realtors like the Burbank model. The tenants in Burbank, however, told us not to follow their model, because their commission currently has no tenants and no binding authority. As usual, the world looks very different from a tenant's perspective. Also, according to the staff report, there is no real opposition to forming this commission. This makes the political map look pretty easy, doesn't it? You will hear a thank you from key demographic groups for setting it up, and almost no one will yell at you for it. Thank you very much. Goodbye.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kwak. Next.
Mike Van Gorder, you have three minutes. Mike, go ahead.
Hello, thank you. So rhetorically, I'm glad that this conversation is finally happening. The council is acknowledging the housing crisis, and this commission is its first real attempt to incorporate the perspective of the people who are primarily affected by that housing crisis. Now, renters have a majority of state in California, and in the capital of Los Angeles, and in the city of Glendale. But at the city level, our representation, our direct representation consists only of Shanta hockey. We need tenants to speak with authority and with the powers of the city for tenants. Because regardless of the actions of the next few years, this housing crisis is not going to go away. Landlords and their lobbyists are always going to come here and tell you that every existing program is more than enough. So here now, the tenant's telling you that this is far from the case. Now, I graduated last week with a master's degree in urban planning from UCLA, a Boston School of Public Policy. My interest is in creating a city environment that lets people who want to live here stay here. And I'd love to buy a home, but average prices are now almost a million dollars. Does that sound fair? I have to rent, and I have no guarantee that my daughter will get to grow up in the city, because there's no security right here, and there's no looming horizon of the missing middle of housing. So I have a choice between a million-dollar single-family home and $800,000 town home, thousands of new luxury units, and the quote-unquote naturally-affording affordable housing. That just means that I continue to love Glendale solely at the mercy of my landlord. This commission, if it's built with a majority of tenants and an independent power, would provide me some of the protections against the worst kind of abuse, and might possibly put together policy proposals that would be more suited to the actual needs of the population and not just the desire for ever snowballing property values. This commission needs to reflect the statistics of the city. It's comprised of 65% renters and 33% homeownership property owners. It needs a non-advisory position. It can't just be a consent factory for the council. It can't be temporary, it can't be volunteered. It needs to be a paid, independent commission. Because housing, considered only as an investment property, has led us to this moment where rents have gone up over 50% from 2000 to 2050. This is unsustainable. This mission is a necessary next step after the rental rights package and after the inclusionary zoning packages that have been put forward. But those two things and the landlord-tenant commission alone, these are not going to do enough. They are necessary steps toward the larger global affordability, which can only be achieved with equitable effort towards supply, stability, and subsidy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Jane Patel, you have three minutes. Jane, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jane Patel, and I have been a resident in Glendale for 16 years and have rented for 16 years. I love this city. I would urge city council to establish a landlord-tenant advisory body that could allow tenants and avenue to suggest policy. Many of our residents, as you know, are renters, and they have spent many years living here and are important members of our community. Too often, those with less resources do not have the time to advocate. I also ask that city council consider establishing a rental registry that could allow for actual population statistics and have a record of current rent rates to better understand the fiscal challenges that many families and individuals face. Without a record, it's difficult to have a way to check on claims made by landlords about rent, lease terms, et cetera, and it could give tenants a direct line to local advocacy government body. Thank you so much.
Greg Astriyan, you're live. You have three minutes. Go ahead.
Mayor Devine? Mayor Devine, my name is Greg Astriyan. I am speaking on behalf of Glendale Association of Realtors. We think that if a tenant, housing provider, advisory body, addresses issues like maintenance, habitability, outreach and education, the most important part, we believe there is merit to it. However, handling issues dealing with legal collectible rent is altogether a different ballgame. That needs to be handled by staff. Now, some of the concerns that we have with formation of an advisory board is the load work. Your ten, your, your report states that 3,600 calls, 1,400 emails, 750 in-person service calls have been answered within 27 months. That's about 133 calls a day, 52 emails to be responded and researched a day, another 27 visits a day. I don't know if this was filtered down to discernible case numbers, how many cases that would make, and whether or not an advisory body could handle it. Having said that, I have acted as the chair of planning commission in the city for a long time, and I can tell you, I haven't met city for a long time, and I can tell you, I haven't met or I haven't heard of any other commissions that have handled ten or fifteen or twenty cases every time that they got together. So with that, there is merit to it. However, since the rental or the legal rent has been codified, not only on the state level, AB 1482, 3088, SV 91, but our own program and our own ordinance in City of Glendale, that should not be within the purview of the advisory board. With that, I thank you for lending a year to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I do not have any more callers. Do you still want me to accept calls coming in for this item?
No, I think we're, well, we'll see where we are at the end, okay? If there's one or two, we'll consider it. Okay, who would like to begin discussion of this item? It's kind of complicated, but I think we can get through it.
I'll be happy to go first, since this was an idea or something that I asked for staff to look into. The one thing that kept coming to the forefront during the discussions that helped establish the programs that the city has now, when you spoke to individuals representing either landlords or tenants, the one common refrain from both sides was, well, there wasn't enough outreach done. We did not have an adequate opportunity to sit at the table. Now, accurate or inaccurate sentiments can oftentimes become, or perception becomes reality, at least in the minds of those speaking it. And perhaps they didn't know about it in time. We do our efforts to do outreach, and we have meetings oftentimes in the city, and sometimes we get the usual suspects to show up, and sometimes no one shows up, and sometimes there's more staff from the city in the room than there are actual attendees. And there's a variety of reasons for that. If you're a tenant, perhaps it's because, you know, if you're a renter, your hours, your work hours may not coincide. Or even if you're a landlord, your work hours may not coincide with when meetings are. And I also know that, at least in my case, and perhaps for my colleagues, we get asked questions from tenants and landlords and their attorneys about issues related to housing that we don't have the answer to. And sometimes when we even refer it to staff, staff sits there and scratches their head and says, we'll have to get back to you. We'll have to research that and look into it, particularly in the current climate when there's so much changing, as Mr. Zovak noted, at the state level, at the local levels. And we are having to skip from one foot to the next and trying to juggle a number of changing policies to find out what is allowable, what are the rights of renters, what are the rights of landlords here in the city. Now, I, I don't believe that the council chambers are the place to review and weigh in on those particular issues. I believe that the council's role should be to take the big-picture issues that impact our city and to make policy decisions and not to mediate on individual cases, even though sometimes if we were to, I feel like if we were to do a pie chart of DRB appeals versus other city business, it would look like, as I've said, Pac-Man in terms of time spent on certain issues here at, in these chambers. And I feel that it would be to the benefit of the city to have something like Burbank has, to give an opportunity for individuals to come and receive information, to ask the questions, whether they are a renter or landlord, as to what is allowable here in Glendale. You know, I believe that there's going to be more issues related to this. Right now, some of the colleagues may say that, well, we don't know if we really need this, because we, and callers as well. And I acknowledge the fact that COVID probably has dampened some of the clamor and the issues that may arise regarding rent, because rents are decreasing in some areas. There's more policies that are being implemented from the state level, which we will see the impacts of and feel the impacts of. And it may seem that the calls that we all receive or the individuals that come to us in these chambers talking about the issues facing them have gone away. But I do know that it's only a matter of time before they come back. And I do feel that once some of the government assistance programs and some of the issues, bigger-picture issues with the economy trickle down and shakeout, we may be faced with more and more issues of evictions or issues of how to appropriately raise rents within the allowable parameters. And, you know, we talk about the caps, but then we also know that there are, you know, a number of aging units and structures in this city that landlords who are property-changing hands may want to upgrade and bring up the price of those units to a rate that makes financial sense for them. And this isn't to demonize anyone. And we saw enough of that in the discussions leading up to the programs that the city eventually implemented. No one here should be perceived as a bad actor or a bad person. Too much of that has occurred sometimes when people call in and emotions get the better of us. This is about creating a forum where we can have a civil way of engaging, understanding, and coming up with recommendations, perhaps that the city council can then deliberate on and consider. It's not to give, I do not envision any type of tenant landlord body to have authority beyond making recommendations, beyond reviewing, and beyond putting forth information. And that would be, and if it's, if it's a committee, I think it's a start. Perhaps we walk before we run. Perhaps we see how it works out. I like some of the things that we did in the past. It would be great to revive them and, and to see if what we can do to make sure that both landlords and tenants feel that they have a voice somewhere in city hall, other than just the staff people, who I'm sure are doing a fantastic job, and they're working their darndest. But, you know, unfortunately, we hear this as well, that a lot of our renters may not feel that they have a voice necessarily for them. Now, right or wrong, again, it's about what they feel and how we can give both renters and also the landlords the form they deserve to have these discussions. So my, my recommendation would be to create a committee modeled after something like Burbank has. The shortcomings of Burbank, obviously, where right now they have this committee, but there is no one who represent, there's no one who's a renter or a renter advocate, is obviously not something I would want to see. I think that there would have to be some sort of structure that we can come up with. But that would be my desired outcome from this discussion, to move in that direction. Thank you, Madam Mayor and colleagues.
Mr. Agajanian? Parazian?
I'm sorry, someone call me?
Would you like to make some comments?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Mr. Agajanian, are you ready?
Since you say so.
Thank you.
I just want to go to back first before I touch this issue, because I don't know what, what's the right way to go. But however, I remember in, for years, I'm a TV host and I meet lots of people every day. And when I became a council member here in 2018, yeah, two thousand, 2018, that's right, 2018, a gentleman came to my office, in my TV office, and he came in one of these buildings, which there were forty-three units, a big company on Wilshire Boulevard. They bought that building, which there was forty-three units, and they raised the rent from fourteen-twenty-five to twenty-six-hundred at the time. So he came with two little kids, the paper in his hand, that rent jumped, that's some, somewhere around eighty-three percent raise. And right, as I said, they come and meet me, publicly come and meet me. Another person came, which the landlord in ten and a half months, raised the rent four times, every time two hundred, hundred fifty, two hundred fifty, and however, raised the rent during that less than eleven months, somewhere around thousand-dollar raise they had. So that's why, at the time, I thought the best thing gonna be to have this renter rights program. I came here and offered to have some sort of limit on rent increase. Fortunately, then, council member, Vortan Karbichin, and Mayor Devine agreed to work on this, three of us. And we brought a reasonable offer of that landlord can raise the rent up to seven percent during one year, not four times, but just one time. And if they have to ask the tenant, they want to raise the rent more than seven percent, still they could do it. The landlord wants to raise the rent more than seven percent, it's fine. But they have to pay the tenant to go. So when I was a kid, I was in the, in that position that they kicked us out, and my dad, I remember, didn't know what to do. And so I'm glad that we came up with this renter rights program, which I think is beneficial to the landlords and tenants, in my opinion. And mostly, when I met both sides of this issue, they, all the time, they told me they think it's, what is going on is fair. What we have in place is fair. And also, as we know, Governor came up with this, some sort of control on the rent, which five percent plus CPI, which has, has been mentioned here, in April was eight-point-six percent, and our seven, and we are offering seven percent. So we are in, basically, on right track, in my opinion. I do not have, and I thought, because, as I said, I'm a TV host, my studio, everybody knows where I am. They just walk in, there is no control. And recently, I never heard complaints before. Every day, big group of people, they would come in and they would complain, my landlord raised the rent this much, that much. And I do not get those complaints since we started this issue in 2018, and in February of, exactly, February of 2019, we, we established that renter rights ordinance. And I did not hear complaints that many. Rarely, one may come and say, my landlord raised the rent like six, seven percent. Is that correct or not? I do not hear that much of a complaint. So I think we fairly resolved this issue, basically. And I get calls from other cities, and even from New York, they were asking about our plan or our ordinance of this raising the rent with seven percent. I thought we are on right track, and we did a very good job at the time when we together established this ordinance. And I do not have a problem with establishing any commission, but I do not want a situation that, to see that somehow any commission or board or group will somehow do something that will impact our, what we established already, and it works good. I mean, I'm sure my council members also, they're in same position. I never heard somebody come, any council member to come to me and say, oh, they came and they're complaining about the rent, or obviously, any raise of rent is difficult for the tenant to handle. I understand that. But we have to see both sides, like landlords, they think that it's their building, they can raise as much as they want, which we did not prevent that either. If they want to get higher rents, they can pay them to go. So I thought we have the best fair system anywhere. And the only concern, as I said, I want to repeat, we should not come up with some sort of commission or group that will impact our established renter rights program. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, council member. Mr. Ajarian?
Who seconded this to come to council? Why doesn't that person go next? I don't know who it was. It wasn't me.
He's not here, probably.
Madam Mayor, I, I believe it was Councilmember Brotman.
I will defer to.
Oh, you mean this item, this item. Well, that would be.
Oh, you're talking about the other thing?
Yes, I was.
I'm talking about.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Brotman.
I'd like to hear his thoughts.
Okay, I'm happy to, I'm happy to go, yeah. So I think there's merit to standing up a body, whether it's a commission or it's a committee, we can maybe discuss a little bit more. But I, I think, I think there's merit. And, and I would say, you know, the, the rental rights program team does a great job. So it's, it's not as if we don't have that kind of function here, like is the case in Burbank, where they don't have a similar group. So, so I think they do, they do a lot of what a committee or a commission would do. But the, the benefit to having it be done through a commission or committee is that it would be public, and it would involve members of the community who are renters and landlords. So people that are living these issues would be the ones, you know, weighing in on, on some of these cases that, that, you know, now come to the rental rights team. I'm not sure exactly how the workflow would go, because we, you know, we do have the rental rights team. They're taking calls on a day-to-day basis. A commission would be meeting, you know, or a committee would be meeting, you know, probably no more than once a month. So I'd, I'd be interested in, in staff kind of mapping out how that might work. I note that in Burbank, and I spoke to two of the council members in Burbank and also the staff person responsible for their commission, and they have a process where, when cases come in in between meetings, they will assign two members out of five to work on those cases. So there is work that goes on in between meetings, and I think in the meetings, they tend to report out on, you know, the cases they've been working on and how they were resolved. So we could potentially look at something like that. But I'd, I'd ask staff to kind of come back and flesh out how the workflow would, would look. I also think that this body could play a role in, in reviewing our policies. I understand, you know, that we had this working committee, this rental housing working committee, but that was something like twenty years ago. So, and we've, we've implemented, you know, ordinances in more recent years. They're a little bit confusing, as Peter said, you know, they have different trigger points, whether it's, I don't know, three units and more, five units and more. So maybe there's some cleanup that can be done. I also think maybe we could look at the issue of security deposits and how those are handled, because I know of some cases, many cases, where people feel they're treated unfairly and they don't have any recourse. So maybe that could also be in the purview. And I would also like the body to look at the affordability question, because I think that's what's underlying a lot of this. Mike Van Gorder called in and talked about not being able to afford a house, and I think that's a central concern that we all have. And, and maybe we, we need to look at, at, you know, housing a little more broadly, housing affordability, and what do we do? Because it's more than just adjudicating disputes between landlords and tenants. It's also looking at deeper policy changes that would address those issues. I mean, we can look at things like, you know, even some, even some ideas that may be considered far out, like housing collectives or community land trusts. I mean, the, the sky is the limit, I guess, in terms of what this. limit, I guess, in terms of what this group could look at, and they would come back and, and report to us. So I, I see that there could be some, something positive there. One last thing I want to address is how we choose the members, and I think we would want to choose members differently than we do with our normal commissions, where we each choose somebody, and then everybody else, unless there's a real, serious objection, supports that choice. I think we should maybe look at this a little bit like we're looking at the Blue Ribbon Panel on pension, on our pension exposure. Let, you know, people apply, and then look at the whole candidate pool, and make sure that we have a balance of tenants and landlords. I know in the case of Burbank, as Councilmember Kasakian just mentioned, there are no tenants on their commission, which I think is a problem. In Culver City, they have three landlords, three tenants, and three others. They have had problems retaining their tenant members, there's a lot of churn, which is understandable, so that's something we need to grapple with. But I think we want a balance, and so we should be choosing people in a different way than we would normally be choosing people for our commissions. And I'm looking at my notes here, and I think that I've covered all the points. So that's, that's what I have.
All right, thank you, thank you, Councilmember Brotman. I guess it's your turn, Councilmember, Authoritymember Najarian.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Oh, Mr. Genie?
Would this committee eventually follow some kind of a protocol, or a doctrine, so it will really work within that doctrine?
Yes, that, that would be established after we decide today if this is the course that we want to take.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor?
Oh, Ms. Perazian, sorry. Ms. Perazian, go ahead.
Yes, so I remember some ten years ago, when I was, I got to, on the board, housing board, tenant advisory board were having their meetings, and I remember me and Mr. Menzey going to one of their, their meetings, and I was sitting and thinking about, why don't we, we have like the tenant advisory board, the landlord, landlord advisory board too? So, and I believe, maybe Peter would, would remember that I, I had a suggestion, suggestion to make a body like the tenant commission, tenant advisory board. Now, I am, I believe that this is a good idea to have just some, any kind of body, but to me, a committee is the better choice for us.
That, which is a better choice for us? I'm sorry, Ms. Perazian.
I'm sorry?
Which, which is, you said is a better choice for us?
Committee.
A committee, okay.
Landlord and tenant advisory committee.
Okay, all right. Thank you, is that it?
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
That's all.
Thank you for the input. Okay, Authoritymember Najarian?
So, thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. My, you know, my position on this has, has definitely evolved. Initially, I was 100% against any sort of commission, any sort of board, any sort of committee. My thoughts were, we've got a extensive body of law, both at the state level and at the city level, regarding landlord-tenant issues, and let's, let me not forget, the federal laws for fair housing and discrimination, and, and all those requirements and regulations. And based on that, I said, what are we doing this for? Why are we wasting our time? I did have a discussion with Karen Quoc, who is involved in these issues with Neighborhood Legal Services, and obviously, as we know, a member of the Glendale Tenants Union, and I learned about some of the issues and concerns that the tenants have. And, and some of them are valid concerns. Now, let me, let me say that I think I bring to this subject a very unique perspective. I have been a apartment building owner, I have been a renter, I've been a commercial building owner, I'm currently a commercial building renter, I am an attorney, and I defend tenants, I'm an attorney, and I represent landlords. On top of all that, I've sat as a judge, across the street and in Van Nuys, dealing with these landlord-tenant issues. It's a very complex area of the law. Something that I have discovered, though, is many times, the, both parties, the landlords and the tenants, simply haven't had a chance to sit down, speak, and air out the issues that are the crux of the dispute. And not all of it is unpaid rent. Much is unpaid rent, but a lot of it is ill will, misunderstandings, hard feelings on both sides, which bring the parties into dispute, which lead them to a lawsuit, which lead them to hiring attorneys, and going before a court. I think what we should do, I'm very much in support of mediation. Now, the thing with mediation is, it's not best served sitting before a board of five, six, seven, hearing the particular issues, well, the landlord did this to me, oh, the tenant did this, and their dog barks, and landlord is rude to me, all those sort of things. It's not best addressed as a commission. It's best addressed with a single mediator, who many times does not have both parties even in the same room with him. He goes from one side to the other side, discussing the issues that were raised, and tries to find a resolution. It would be a huge mistake if we give a committee, or a commission judicial authority to make a legal decision about any actions that the landlord has done, or any actions that the tenant has taken with regard to their contract for tenancy. The solution to some of the issues we have, I believe, are a, creating a mediation panel, a group of individuals who will serve as individual mediators, who will take their time, schedule an appointment in private. That's the other thing. A lot of tenants are probably going to be a little bit, you know, shy, or embarrassed, or afraid to bring out their issues in a public setting. I think that they'll be much more open, and honest, and communicative if they're in a mediation setting, where there's one mediator, and what he says to that mediator isn't going to be released to the entire world. In fact, unless that particular tenant says, please release that information that I'm giving you to my landlord, that that won't even be communicated to the landlord. If we want to give a stipend to these mediators, who will be learned of the particularities of Glendale's series of, of rules, the just cause, the right to lease, et cetera, you know, let's give them a stipend, let's give them twenty dollars an hour to sit down and hear these issues, and try to bring the parties together to resolve the issue. That mediator would not have judicial authority, would not be able to say landlord's right, or tenant's right, but try and bring the parties to some sort of understanding that would either resolve an existing lawsuit, or would stop a lawsuit, an unlawful detainee action, from even starting. I think perhaps that's, that's really the best way to go on this. I think it'll have the best flexibility, it'll bring some privacy to the, to the proceedings, it'll bring some input from both parties. It should be able to be done quickly, not necessarily tied to a regular committee meeting once a month, or twice a month, but to be scheduled as needed, have a panel of these mediators who are screened by the city attorney's office, by housing, so they at least know the basics of our particularities of our law, as well as the state law, and of course, any federal fair housing issues that are there. I'm not saying they need to go through extensive training, but they need to at least understand the issues. I think that's the best thing to do. I mean, I would support something like that. I don't know if council's ready to go that way, but I think that would be a good, a good step in the direction to resolve some of these issues.
I have a question for you, though. Would their, their decision be binding?
No. So a mediation is only as good as, as the parties agreeing to a, to a resolution of it. If a mediation, if a mediator cannot bring them together to an understanding, then, you know, we have to send them on their way through the court system.
Thank, okay, thank you. So, where am I on this one? Well, I think there's something to be said about bringing landlords and tenants together. I know, Mr. Zovak, you were talking about how this phone call leads to another phone call, and it's, it's difficult to make any kind of decision if, or any kind of, make any kind of compromise if the people aren't there together. So I understand the, the importance of that. I agree that tenants and landlords need a voice. I've, I've never doubted that, I've never spoken against that, that they need to be heard, and as we can see from this report, and thanks staff for the report, because it is very good, that, you know, how their voices are heard can occur in different, different ways, in a variety of ways. I too spoke with staff in Burbank, a former mayor of Burbank. That committee, or commission that they have, hears on average, maybe three or four a year, that's it. They are basically outreach and education, but I, I think that there is merit to that. I think we could establish a committee, like put our, it's like a pilot project, a buffer committee, to maybe, to address recurring problems, identify recurring problems and conflicts. So I, I would go along with that. You know, the Burbank Commission offers recommendations to council, and serves to assist the public in answering questions and resolving landlord-tenant disputes. Mostly, they give education, they listen, and they try. I happen to think, and, and this is what people from Burbank told me, that our rental rights program is absolutely the way to go, that it is the best, because we can offer legal advice, and our staff, they know the rules, the regulations, the laws, the ordinances. So we have actually the best program that we, we could possibly ask for. That being said, where I stand is, I would recommend that we have a working committee of some sort, not a commission, and not paid. You know, commissions, we, we don't pay any commissioner. If you want to be on the, the commission, you have to agree that you will have the time, and you will be able to attend the meetings. One of the, and, and another thing, you know, in Burbank, I know the gal that was the, the renter representative, and she left, and they have not been able to find someone. It's kind of like Housing Authority, we looked for someone to be on the Housing Authority for two, three years, and we couldn't find anyone, and we could very easily, I'm not sure about this, but maybe have the same issue with this sort of a commission. So I, I think, and I also don't agree with, the tenants should have sixty-four, five, six percent of the representatives. I think the landlords and tenants must be equally represented, in order to assure there's equality and fair decisions. The members have to be knowledgeable of the, of our ordinances, and our, our laws, that would be the basis of their decisions and their discussions. You know, we can't just put people on there that don't know what they're talking about. They would act as mediators, Councilmember Najarian, but non-binding. Legal issues, they can refer to our, our city attorneys, who have handled situations beautifully. I think they can meet once a week. I don't think, someone suggested there be fifteen members, and someone else said thirty members, and, you know, you get something, a committee that's too big, and, and it gets to be unwieldy. So I would say, two renters, two landlords, two homeowners, or neutral, neutral parties. As I said, meet once a month, and I also, I also think that members should be chosen through applications, just like we do all of our other commissions, and this committee would, would be the same. And that way, we could check their, their knowledge, their backgrounds, and not just appoint people off, you know, that, that we know, or that we, that we like, or, you know, you might want to be on this. Let's get people on this committee that are knowledgeable of what we've done. And I think Councilmember Aga Janey makes a brilliant point. We don't want to, we don't want to form a committee that's going to cause any negative impact to what we've already done, because I agree, what we have done, this council, and I'm so proud to be a part of it, is, is good for the renters, it's good for the landlords, it's working. And if we only have four cases a year, then that, that's pretty darn good. I think that we can adjust the authority and the duties as council sees fit, we can recommend to the body as they move along, what we, what we see them, their responsibility being, and I think they can be a good sounding board for our tenants and, and our landlords. And again, as long as, if we can get people together to talk over issues, I think that's a step in the right direction. So that's where I'm coming from, that's how I stand on the issue, and if anyone would like to add anything?
Sure.
Councilmember Kasakian?
Thank you. I actually like, I think that Councilmember Najarian made a really good point about how some of these issues can be dealt. I think his experience as an attorney, and someone who's represented landlords, tenants, is valuable. I think he's right, that to have that type of a process, mediation process, is something I would be inclined to support. I also think that having a committee, maybe not a commission, because it seems as though there's a lot of hesitation towards that, and I can understand that, we can, we can always start from somewhere. I think a committee is important, because, again, this is not about this side or that side. There are, the questions I often have for staff, and I have it not just for this issue, but on a number of issues, is who's your kitchen cabinet? Who's your sounding board that you're bouncing ideas of whether what we're doing is actually working? Ultimately, we all are here to serve the public, and we have to look at the effectiveness of our policy decisions and our outreach efforts. I've heard from a number of places that, you know, the, well, I mean, just take the fact that we don't necessarily have the landlord experience, and decisions that we make, which oftentimes are made with the best of intentions, may have unintended consequences that impact the landlord, and by extension, then start impacting the tenant. And so if we have a body on which we have individuals who are so inclined to dedicate their time, to share their knowledge, share their experience, and say, hey, this would work, but this would not, this would impact my renters this way, my tenants this way, or this would impact me as a tenant in this way, is incredibly valuable, and we can't just, to have that, to have that knowledge at your fingertips as, as a city, is incredibly valuable to us, as well as we, in the future, make bigger policy decisions. This is, obviously, housing is not going to go away. Housing is one of the major cornerstones of the issues that we deal with here as a council. So that's where I'm at. I think that there were some good recommendations that were made. The one thing I will disagree with you on, Madam Mayor, is I would like to see stipends. I would like to see individuals be given a modicum, I mean, we receive stipends ourselves, so I think it's only fair that, when we're asking citizens to give up their time, and some of the commissions, as you well know, meet for hours, and I can think of the design review ones, whether it's planning, or even civil service, I, I would like to, in the future, and I'll raise this issue again at a future council meeting, like us to give some modicum of, demonstrate some modicum of gratitude, some gesture to our commissioners in terms of a small stipend. I think it's a, something I, I would like to see. That's all, thank you.
Well, I just think if we offer a, a stipend to this committee, then we're opening a can of worms. a, a can of worms, and we'll have every commission coming after us, and I think we have to remain fiscally-
That is my point, though. I want everyone. I want all commissions.
Well, that's, okay. Councilmember Agajanian?
This brought up, if we want to pay the commissioners, we have, I guess, thirteen commissions?
Yes.
How many commissions?
We have thirteen.
Yeah, thirteen commissions. Then we have to have an accountant to go ahead and keep the record, and even though you want to pay small money, it will be a major accounting work, that whether they have been present, they have not been present, how long they spend here. I think it's going to be a difficult task, but anyway, that was not, I wanted to say. I just want to bring the issue that we also allocated four hundred fifty thousand for, for having also staff to review rental matters, right? We have two staff members that, they're completely working on landlord-tenant issues, basically. Am I right?
Madam Mayor, Chair Kosakian, if I'm not mistaken, it, within the recently passed budget, there was a line item for landlord-tenant services?
Yes.
If I'm not mistaken, it was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There was no program necessarily attached to it. It's, it was kind of a placeholder for something that might be developed here or in, in some other discussions that you may be having in the near future. So there wasn't anything particularly assigned to it.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
But you have two staff members who are specifically working on landlord-tenant issues, I guess.
There are two key staff members that are currently the most involved on the rental rights program.
Right.
There were no staff members assigned to that tentative reservation of four hundred fifty thousand dollars for landlord-tenant services. It's still yet to be determined.
Right.
And even in this report, although I didn't mention it in my presentation, we do state in the fiscal impact section, is that we expect there, depending upon what is decided upon by the council, that there could possibly be impacting, a fiscal impact with regards to staffing levels as well. And so depending upon the discussion you have here, and then staff being able to take a look at what's been stated, and then come up with some type of proposals, there may be staffing costs associated with that.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Okay, so where we are now is, we want to take a vote. If, there are no other comments from anyone? I want to make sure. Mr. Brotman?
May I, Madam?
Yes.
Yeah. So I've, I've been listening to what everybody has to say, and it seems, and I'll, I'll defer to Councilmember Kosakian if he wants to make a motion, but I see, I see three elements that, that we want a body to address. And one of them has to do with information and education outreach, that kind of thing, which, which is part of what the rental rights team does now. Another one is, is mediation, so resolving actual disputes. And the third one, which I'm also very interested in, is policy advice, looking at what we have in place. Is it working? Does it need to be tweaked? What new things should we be considering as far as housing affordability more broadly? So, you know, I would like to see, you know, staff come back and, and give us an idea of how that could be structured, where those three components would be, would be addressed. I, I'm with Councilmember Kosakian on the idea of a stipend. I just did a very quick calculation, and I think if we gave all of our boards and commissioners something like fifty dollars every time they meet, that would come to about forty thousand a year. We're spending forty thousand, forty thousand dollars on, on fireworks. So I think we can, we can do that. I know I get fifty dollars when I attend a Southern California Association of Governments subcommittee meeting, so I think it's only reasonable that we do that. And we talk about the difficulty of retaining people, or we've heard about the difficulty of retaining, you know, attracting and retaining tenants, and maybe that's part of the reason. So I think we need to, we need to compensate them in some way. And I also like the idea, I heard from some callers, about making sure meetings are done at night or in the evenings, so that people that are working all day can attend. Anyway, that's, I, I think that would be the package that I would be interested in seeing a motion developed around.
Okay, so-
Sure, I, I can make a motion if-
Well, I think what we need is simply a motion on whether to direct staff. I think, I think staff has enough information.
Well, I, I think it'd be good for us, for the record, so we make sure we're, we're rowing in the same direction.
Mm-hmm.
Or, and it seems like Councilmember Kosakian is ready to kind of put some meat on that bones in terms of the motion directing us. I just have a, a comment and a, and a question, or two comments, a question. First comment is, it was referenced earlier, that the rental rights programs provides legal advice to, to landlords and tenants. We do not, staff does not provide legal advice to third parties. Even the legal staff cannot legally do that. We certainly provide information to both landlords and tenants about what our, our rental rights program ordinance requirements are. And then as, as staff noted, there's always often extensive discussion, I wouldn't say extensive, but there are discussions between landlords and tenants with the rental rights staff, where there might be some issues of dispute that can be resolved in, in an informal manner. So that, that was the, the comment. The question is, or the other comment I had was, and this may be part of Councilmember Kosakian's motion, is I just want to make sure I'm understanding what, what you're talking about when you reference a committee versus a commission. Legally, there's, there's no distinction. I think maybe as it was referenced here, it was maybe more of an informal vehicle, but it would still be, if it's established by the council and it's created by the council and its members are appointed by the council, it's going to be subject to the, some of the similar requirements that we're going to have for a commission, such as it's going to be subject to the Brown Act. It's going to be, maybe, maybe subject to disclosure requirements, that sort of thing. So I just want to make sure you're aware of that. If you, if you're, unless you're attempting to create an ad hoc or temporary committee, that would be, that would be different. But from a, just a purely legal standpoint, there might not be a difference.
So from a purely legal standpoint, let me ask, is there anything to preclude us from having a committee that would not be required? We can certainly notice those meetings, but how were the previous bodies that the city organized, whether it was a 12-12, the group that came up with the 12-12 component or policy that you referenced? How were those designed? How did they meet?
I believe that they, they've complied with the Brown Act.
Okay. I mean, I think any, I think any committee in the city should be at least publicly state when its meetings are.
Right.
I don't know how much further they have to go at that point. Do the members of those committees then have to file Form 700s? I mean, what then triggers that?
I would have to look at that. Maybe, Ms. Varpetin is on the phone, maybe she can, or on the, on the WebEx, she might be able to, to explain that. Generally, it would be subject to Form 700 as well, if we-
So we've had me, we've had committees, though, in the past in the city where people have met, have made recommendations and have not had to form-
Correct.
Fill out paperwork.
Temper ad hoc, it wouldn't be, but if, if you're creating a, a committee that's going to have ongoing jurisdiction over a subject matter, it's generally going to be subject to both Brown Act and Public Records Act, I mean, Conflict of Interest Law.
So do we have to give the timeline now in order for us to avoid having individuals to necessarily fill out those paperwork if we want to? My, my goal would be to have it as an ad hoc committee currently, see where we are within a year's time.
Right.
And then take steps to see what we do with the committee to make it a more formalized body or not. But I don't mean formalized in terms, because I do expect this to operate in a formal manner.
Right.
I mean, formalized in terms of making it, making it more permanent.
Sure. My suggestion, though, would be to make it, to, to make it as part of your motion, a, a one-year pilot or temporary program. And we would, we would, still, I believe, have to, have to comply with the Brown Act requirements, but the other, the other, there might be flexibility on some of the other components of it.
And I would say one year from when they have their first meeting.
Correct.
Not one year from today, because I know it's going to take a little bit of time for staff.
Right. And I do believe we'll have, we'll have some items we'll need to bring back to establish it. So even if it's not going to be formal in the municipal code, we would want to adopt a resolution stating forth all the requirements that the council believes are appropriate.
I would like to support that idea.
So we, so we have this committee, which will be ad hoc for a period of 12 months from their first meeting. That will review our policies regarding education outreach and review and advise council on the effectiveness of our policies. Along with, I would like to add to the motion, staff bringing back a process like the one that Mr. Najarian articulated far better than I could regarding a mediation process, non-binding, staff-driven, right? Staff, would it be with a staff representative, but it would be a private, how would you like to have it worded?
So I think it would, I, I, what I'd like to see would be individuals separate from the city staff who've received some basic training or have basic qualifications to conduct mediations on an as-needed basis, one-on-one with, well, not one-on-one, but with the parties to a dispute.
And if I may, if I, if I can add to that, he's suggesting mediation that's non-binding. This committee can do the same thing. They can listen, they can bring in the landlord and the tenant, listen to the issues, be it, you know, my apartment isn't being maintained. The trees are, are not being trimmed.
Certainly.
You know, the dogs are barking. And, and that would be one of the, one of the responsibilities of the, or the duties of this committee.
The one issue I would have with that is something that Councilmember Najarian raised, which may not have been, I, I certainly hadn't considered it, was the openness that some individuals may feel doing, revealing a number of situations in a public setting versus one that would be more private.
Well, if that's the case, then they can go to the, the rental rights-
They have an option?
Yeah, they have an option.
Give them an option between the-
Sure, they can go to the rental rights or-
Or the individual mediator.
Right. Well, the, no, I mean, our staff, our rental rights.
The staff want to do that? Do you want to be mediator, or would you rather have other individuals?
On, just on the cases, I'm just talking about the cases where the, the, the renter or the landlord doesn't want to air it in public. I mean, these aren't going to be televised, are they? These, these meetings aren't being televised. But if there's someone that doesn't want to come in and talk about it in front of this committee, they can be referred to the, our staff.
Our, our staff currently does that very informally. They do not have the training Mr. Najarian is talking about, but oftentimes, they are able to apply our local rules, tell the landlord, tell the tenant, and there's a satisfactory resolution. I, I would just caution, setting up two mediation processes, one with the committee and one with the panel. People go shopping. Where do I get the best? Or they may not like what happens in one, and they say, well, I really want to go to the other. We can certainly do it. We can certainly set it up with the, with the commission or committee. And, and just a note, we were distinguishing committee versus commission. Committee not having any judicial authority, recommended advisory only. Commission having some authority.
And for the sake of streamlining, that would be my desire, Madam Mayor, is to have that arbitration process be more streamlined, be more flexible. One of the thing, points that Councilmember Najarian brought up was just the timing of it, the ability to meet at the need of the parties involved versus a standing ad hoc committee that an individual who has an issue may have to wait until the next time that committee meets in order to be heard. So for that reason, I, I, I concur with Mr. Lanzafame that I would like to have that hearing component not be a part of the committee at this time. And I'm fine with staff continuing that role, but also looking into and bringing forth what it would look like in practice if we were to implement what Councilmember Najarian suggested.
May I, Madam Mayor?
Go ahead, Mr. Brotman.
Yeah, I would just note what I, what I said before about Burbank is that they will assign two members of their commission to act in a, in a mediation role. So there's no waiting between, you know, one meeting and the next. There's no waiting that month. I'm not sure what training they give, but I would suggest we do provide training, because I know mediation is not something anybody can just walk into a room and do. So that may be a way to, to resolve the issue, is to have those people conduct the mediation, but train them and have them do it, maybe in pairs like Burbank does, between meetings. And then it can be done, you know, I think it can be done confidentially in that case. And maybe what gets reported out at the, at the commission meetings or committee meetings could maybe omit names perhaps, if that's something that the parties want.
I, this, this is getting really complicated, and, and just say, let me let Mr. Agajanian speak for a second.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, this is, you know, when there's mediation or committee or a commission, I understand about the video conferencing, but somewhere along the line, it's got some kind of recording. It is almost like a hearing between two different parties. There has to be a recording.
Yeah.
Has to be recorded?
Well, yeah, I mean, it depends whether you're, again, to, to Councilmember Najarian's point, it goes, it depends whether you're treating it as mediation, where you have a neutral third party trying to get the two parties to resolve their difference, versus even in a non-binding arbitration, where you have, you're basically asking somebody to decide whether, even in a non-binding, from everything I've heard, the council is in favor of a mediation route, where you're getting a, the third party, whether it's the commission, the committee members, or, or a, a third party, you know, mediator who, who's hired by the city to do the mediation, is mediation, not, not necessarily somebody making a decision. In that case, you're not necessarily, the necessity to record it is not as, as high, because you, you're not, there's no decision that somebody needs to look at later. You're just getting a third party to try to resolve disputes.
It's non-binding, so why would you, why would you need to record? Yep.
Mayor Devine, just for a point of clarification, initially, it sounded as if there were two paths that this might be leading to. One is the possible creation, depending upon how a vote goes, of an ad hoc committee, but then also exploring a review process for mediation separately. And I'm just wondering whether or not that might be a, one of the first topics that if an ad hoc committee is established, that might be one of the first things for them to look at, and then come back and ask a lot of the questions that are being asked right now, and maybe formulate an answer to them, and then come back with a recommendation, as opposed to pursuing two different tracks of ad hoc committee and come back to us with a mediation proposal.
That, that sounds like a very good suggestion, Mr. Zovak.
I'll accept that.
Simplification, yeah.
I'll accept that. I think that's, that's fine, if Councilmember Najarian is okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. So is, is my motion relatively clear? I know it was a-
Yes, I think so.
A bounce around like a pinball.
To conduct, you know, education outreach and, and also review our existing policies and whether they, the, the committee believes that they adequately address the issues to provide, you know, obviously, a public forum for tenants or landlords to come and address their concerns, and then to look at this issue of, of mediation and, and make a recommendation to the city council on how to go about that.
Perfect. And I'm not including anything about the stipends in there, only because I'll raise that issue at a later meeting for all boards and commissions.
Thank you.
Mayor Devine?
You'll, you'll second that, Mr. Agajanian?
Mayor Devine?
Yes.
Yeah, if I may, just want to make a clarification. Councilman Kosakian had mentioned a 12-month period. Is that still part of the motion?
Yes, 12 months from their first meeting.
Pilot program, yes.
And, and was there any indication as to a possible number of people on this ad hoc committee, or is that something you would want brought, brought back in the report that defines this a little bit further?
I would like to have that brought back, look at options as to what some other folks have done.
How many and what the makeup is.
And the makeup.
Great, okay.
Yeah, what, what we'll do is we'll put together that, the options, and then there'll be a resolution by which the council could create the, the ad hoc committee, and then in that resolution, establish those parameters.
Okay, so are we ready for roll call?
And if I could ask a clarifying question?
Go ahead, Ms. Brotman.
Um, because I, I, I mentioned it, but I'm not, I'm not sure where we are with it. Is the, does the motion include the idea that this potential ad hoc committee would look at policy and advise on policy as well as dealing with information and-
Yes.
Yes.
Mediation.
Yes, yes.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kosakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes.
For housing.
Thank you, and what's next? Thank you, and what's next?
There's a motion.
Do we require, we require?
There's a motion to know and file the, the report.
Then we don't need to, once we've already taken the council motion. Thank you.
And what's next?
Next would be adjournment.
Adjournment for council?
Moved.
Second, a German for housing?
Move for housing. Move.
Seconded by Council, uh, Authority Member Agajanian.
Both adjourned at four oh four, that's what it says. Okay, so.